Move on to item 6.2, I believe. Let me get back to that. Our 906 AM item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And we have both Dr. Bloom and Dr. Pace with us. And you can figure out who goes first. Welcome.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair and the supervisors in the public. I'll go ahead and do most of the presentation here. And so basically, update on the COVID response in Lake County. We are essentially moving into a new phase now, I think, of the responses. We've been kind of doing this over the last month or so where we're really moving out of the crisis phase into the long-term maintenance phase where I think we'll be dealing with the risk of infection in the community for an ongoing period of time. But the real risk of catastrophic spread and overwhelm of the hospital and all that seems to be moving, moving farther and farther into the distance. So at this point, the cases are stable. We haven't had no recent deaths that are COVID-related. We're in the orange tier now in terms of businesses. The kids are back in school, at least to some kind of hybrid model. And the vaccination rate is upwards, getting close to about 50% for the people 16 and above. So we're kind of in this phase where things are a whole lot better. We're going to be slowly moving into more normal activities. And there's still risks, so it's important for people to still use good sense and to get vaccinated as soon as possible. But the real overwhelming threat of, that we were seeing in the past is sort of moving away unless we start seeing some real changes in the variants and the ability to override the vaccine. So we'll have Sarah go ahead and give the data, and then I can kind of drill down to some of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have a quick update today on the testing positivity, testings and cases and the vaccination progress in the county. So for the last couple of weeks statewide, testing has started to increase. You can see that here by the graph on the left. The, the black line, testing was up to about 33 per 100,000 for the, the, the week of April 11th through the 17th. Fortunately, the testing positivity remains low at 1.2%. That's the seven-day average. And so it's great that we continue to see the testing positivity remain low even with increases in testing. The daily case rate statewide continues to decline slightly, down to about 4.6 cases per 100,000. We were at about five per 100,000 the previous week. And the number of new deaths associated with COVID continue to decline on a daily basis. And statewide did cross over 60,000 COVID deaths in the last couple of days. But that rate has declined dramatically as the case rate has declined dramatically. Like Dr. Pace said, Lake County remains in the orange tier, which indicates moderate transmission. This is based on data from April 11th through the 17th with a daily case rate of 5.7 per 100,000 and a testing positivity of 3%. This is very similar to the metrics we, Dr. Bloom and I shared last week. So things do appear to be stable in the county. This map here shows the status of counties, the 58 counties throughout the state, with the majority in the orange tier like Lake County. There'll be an update at noon today, and I expect more counties to be moving, a couple more counties to be moving into the yellow tier. I'll note here that, just as a reminder, the, the state will, is planning on essentially doing away with the blueprint and this tier system beginning June 15th. That's a result of the, the vaccination rollout and more Californians being protected through the vaccine, as well as the very, the low case rates and stabilized hospitalizations. So we can expect that on June, June 15th, California will fully reopen. And this is, so as long as we continue to have enough vaccine supply and hospitalization rates remain low and stable. So we expect that change in the middle of June. In Lake County, again, looking at the last couple of weeks, the case rate, the number of new cases identified per week remains fairly stable. And in the last week, we've actually had the fewest number of new cases identified, nine new cases identified in the last seven days. So this is tremendous progress. The testing rate is down a bit in Lake County, so I think it's important to get people continue to get tested. But this is promising news nonetheless, that the testing positivity has remained about the same and fewer cases are being identified. The yellow line here, just wanted to note, the state last week finalized the new guidelines for small counties. And essentially made it, to move into the yellow tier, which would be the least restrictive tier, would need fewer than 14 cases per week, as well as a testing positivity below 2%. So the change there is, it, there's a, essentially, the testing positivity threshold remained the same, but up to 14 cases in a week would allow a small county like Lake to move into the least restrictive tier. So far, we haven't seen that, but we'll be watching that closely. And we would need two weeks of the case rate, or fewer than 14 cases in a week and a testing positivity below 2%. So won't happen. It's possible that it may happen by June 15th, but at this point, looking like we're pretty solidly in the orange tier. I'm going to transition to talk about vaccination coverage and the progress statewide and in the county. So in California, about 68% of people, so more than two and three people in quartile four are at least partially vaccinated. So that's shown here on the right. These are communities with the most healthy conditions, as determined by the Healthy Places Index. And about 46% of people in quartile one are partially vaccinated. And you can see progress throughout the different communities in California. In Lake County, nearly 25,000 people are at least partially vaccinated. And that's more than 47% of residents 16 years in age and older. So it's about 6,400 people who are partially vaccinated, over 18,000 who are fully vaccinated in the county. So more than one in three people are fully vaccinated in the county. This is lower than vaccine coverage statewide. In California, about 58% of people are partially or fully vaccinated. So still work to do to ensure coverage of the population. And here, I just wanted to highlight vaccination coverage by geography, and then age group, and then by race ethnicity. So here, we're looking at aggregated zip codes in the county. So for the six zip codes on the left, about 36% of the eligible population is at least partially vaccinated. And the six zip codes on the right, about 48% of the eligible population is fully vaccinated. And you can see the population estimates for the number of people, the eligible people in these communities. So almost 30,000 eligible people in quartile two and about 22,000 people in quartile one. Here's vaccination coverage in Lake County by age group. About 50% of people are fully vaccinated, who are 65 years of age or older. About 37% of people 50 to 64. This is the age group that saw the greatest improvement over the last week. And about 19% of people 18 to 49 are fully vaccinated in this group, is also increasing fairly rapidly. These data are now made available by the state. If you want to follow along, they're generally updated on Wednesdays, and they're available at covid19.ca.gov/ vaccinationprogressdata. And then my last slide, again, these data are now being reported by the state, looking at vaccination progress by race ethnicity. Note here that about 10% of the vaccine data have missing race ethnicity data. So these are slight underestimates of coverage by race ethnicity. What I'll highlight here is that about 44% of the white, non-Hispanic population is at least partially vaccinated, and about 40% of the Latino or Hispanic population is partially or fully vaccinated. These data shown by the state, again, the reminder, do not include data or do not include doses administered by tribal health. We include that in our, the numbers I reported. The 47% includes the doses administered by tribal health, but the state data does not include them. So it is, I expect, a dramatic underestimate of not only the Native American population, but also other populations, because tribal health is vaccinating people across the county of multiple race and ethnic backgrounds. So I'll just close there with, continue to see progress, over 47% of the eligible population is at least partially vaccinated, and the case rate is stable. The testing positivity is stable, and we'll continue to watch and report these numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So as you can see, we are continuing to do pretty well here. And so what that's doing, since we're talking about the response today, I'm going to talk a lot about what, what we're doing around that. So one is, is with the vaccine sites. We are, we are not filling the spots, the, the appointment slots very well. The demand is continuing, but it's at a much lower rate than we were thinking. And we, part of how we've set up these sites is to really push the vaccine out as quickly as possible into the community. And I think that's how we've gotten the 50% rate that we're seeing. So now, we're in the process of shutting down these drive-through sites and moving the vaccinations to different areas around the county. So right now, we're just going to go ahead with these drive-through sites, is pretty much focus on the second doses and try to complete those, since we have a lot of those that are, that were started in the, you know, and now we need to, three to four weeks after that, go ahead and get the second doses out. So in the coming weeks, we're basically going to be winding down these large drive-through sites, but we're going to be focusing on the second doses in the next, there, just to kind of complete those. We're having, we have a good supply. We have thousands of doses that we're, that are in storage right now. So we have plenty of supply. It's mainly just a matter of getting the, the doses to the people that want them. Right now, it seems like these drive-through sites have sort of served their purpose, that we've gotten a lot of people with those, but now the people that, the other 50% of the population either don't want them or are not using these sites. And so we need to kind of close those down and then start moving to a different model of getting the vaccine to them. The staffing issues have been a, kind of an ongoing problem, and these sites were, are needing to be used for other things now, so we're just going to start moving away from them. The, so we're going to basically end the first doses there and start having people get the first doses at other, other places. So the places to get those are at Sutter and at Adventist. They're both doing, not just their regular patients, but anybody in the community that, that qualifies. So those are places to go. Also, tribal health is doing them for their patients only, for their registered patients. And some of the pharmacies, so Northlake Pharmacy and Safeway are both doing it. And we've just found out now that Walmart is starting to do them in Clear Lake. So all of these, these three sites are all good sites to go get them. So this, that's Northlake Pharmacy, Safeway, and also Walmart in Clear Lake is also just starting to do vaccines. So that's a good place to get them. And then the other possibility is the OptumServe testing site. So where we've been doing these, we've been, people have been able to get COVID tests at the OptumServe site in, there's one in Lakeport and there's one in Lower Lake. They are now going to start doing vaccinations as well. And so the, three days a week at each site, they're going to be offering vaccinations so people can go ahead and get those. And again, all of these sites are, if you're eligible 16 and older for the Pfizer, 18 and older for the Moderna, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson, you're able to go ahead and go to these sites and get them. It doesn't require you to be documented. It doesn't require you to have insurance. You will need an ID, but otherwise, that's pretty much what, what's needed. And they all are basically using appointments, as far as I know at this point. So OptumServe is starting this week in Lower Lake, and that will continue moving forward three days a week during the vaccinations. And then in Lakeport, it will start next week, again, moving forward three days a week. And people can sign up for those on the MyTurn website. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has been, was put on pause for a little while because of some concerns about blood clots that were very rare but could be serious. And so now the CDC and now the state has removed the pause, so we're allowed to go ahead and start using it again, as long as people get properly counsel to do, to, on what the risk and benefits are. The general thinking is that the, the benefits far outweigh the risk, but that's going to be a, a decision for each person to make on their own. So, but that will be, start becoming available again as well. And then I think really, if we're unable to meet the demand in the public, then we're going to go ahead and start setting up some sites again. But at this point, it looks like we'll be able to meet the demand through the existing sites and in addition with the OptumServe. So just encourage people to keep going to the MyTurn site or to contacting us at the Health Department if you need any help with this. We're also, you know, like I said, we're looking at how to reach the 50% that is not vaccinated at this point. And I think we'll probably be doing some mobile sites here in the near future. Once we're able to get our staff off of these large drive-through sites, we'll be able to set up some more targeted mobile sites to be able to go out to the communities where people are needing to get vaccinated and are unable to get in or need, you know, specific adjustments. So that's kind of what we're looking at, at moving forward here. Also, with the businesses and activities, we're in the, in the orange tier now. Like Sarah was saying, June 15th, we're going to be going to, the state is planning on just removing the whole tier status and opening things back up. So we'll see how all that, how, how all that plays out, but that's the current plan. And more vac, more people being vaccinated will help that move forward. So I really encourage people to, to get their vaccine. There, there's some questions about proof of vaccines. The state did come out with some guidance about certain large venues having either proof of vaccination or proof of a negative test in recent days to let people in. I know at the Giants games down in San Francisco, they're doing that, and there's probably going to be some other, other setups where they're doing that. So we're, you know, that, the state's just rolling out that guidance, and we're still trying to figure out exactly what that's going to look like. So in light of all these changes and the fact that things are stabilizing, we're really in the process of kind of winding down a lot of the, the kind of full throttle response that we've been doing in the county. This has been going on for well over a year now. And it seems like we've been quite successful in how this has gone, and now we're in the process of trying to close things down. So our EOC, which is our, our command center that the county's been running, at various points, they're out, this whole thing, we were running it daily for a while and then weekly, and now we're, we've had our last meeting last Friday. So now we're just going to be meeting on a as-needed basis. We've been putting out weekly press releases, so that we have, we put out our last one of those last week. And, you know, so we're in the process of just kind of scaling some of these things back. I am in, I, this is my last week in the job, and so, you know, we have a plan to go forward. The, there is a recruitment process going, although there's not anybody in the position at this point. Dr. Bloom, who's on the call and who spoke a couple of weeks ago, is helping with this transition, and I'll probably be at least part of the process in terms of signing things up, but I have another job I'm going to, so. But we'll be teaming together to help keep things together, and the current Health Department team is, is, you know, continuing forward. So you probably won't even notice much of a gap, and then hopefully somebody will be brought on board here fairly soon. You know, my general thinking is, is that what we're going to be seeing here moving forward is ongoing transmission at a fairly low level, and that probably clusters of infection will pop up. And most of these are going to be occurring in people who are not vaccinated. There was some information that just was coming out this morning about some nursing homes where there were some outbreaks recently, not in our county, elsewhere in the country. And they were, in both cases, they were brought in by unvaccinated staff, and then they got into the nursing home, and there would be these little outbreaks running through. And the vast majority of the cases were in unvaccinated people, and some of them got pretty sick. And some of the vaccinated people, there were low-level infections, but the, the risk of getting infected was pretty low if you had been vaccinated and pretty high if you'd been unvaccinated. And this is in some of the most vulnerable people around with the lowest response to vaccine, et cetera. So I think the message of this is, is that vaccination really helps. And there are some risks, but they're quite low at this point, and it's really a good idea to get vaccinated. Even if you are vaccinated, there is some small risk of getting infected, and so you need to continue to use common sense and masks and not go into crowded indoor areas, especially if you're somebody who has a compromised immune system that may not be mounting a really good immune response to the vaccine. But overall, I think people can, once they're vaccinated, they can start moving around the community freely and interacting with people more. And it's really much safer now, and it's a whole different situation than it was last year, because the, the most vulnerable folks are pretty well vaccinated, and we're not likely to see this overwhelming situation with the hospitals. That, the only caveat to that is, is it's possible that some of these variants could end up emerging that don't, that the vaccine doesn't work on. But at this point, we're not really seeing that in this country. So overall, yeah, I just want to say thank you, everybody, for, this has been quite an exciting year, and we, I think we're now through the other side of it. And so it's been a real privilege to work with the board here and with the folks in the Health Department. We've had a really great team that's been trying really hard to keep everybody safe in the community, and a lot of community partners that have helped, the volunteers that were helping at the vaccine sites and everything. And so I just am very grateful for all the collaboration on this, and I'm also thankful Dr. Bloom's willing to help for this transition period. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Bloom, before we bring it to the board, are there any comments that you wish
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Just a few brief comments. So I just wanted to stress what Dr. Pace was saying regarding the slow but sure demobilization and ramping down of the public health vaccination sites, and wanted to stress that there's multiple other outlets that you can get your vaccination at if you need to get your first or second dose of vaccination, which are throughout the county, the Sutter Center is the Adventist Health System, the Safeways, the pharmacies that Dr. Pace mentioned, as well as now Walmart, as well as the OptumServe sites. So many different locations to obtain vaccination. So there, there's certainly not a dearth of that in the county, nor is there a dearth of vaccine. So plenty to go around, you know, if, if it's still needed. The other, oh, excuse me, one second. Thank you. The other point that I just wanted to make is that we're doing well. Still have work to do, but we're doing well. And I'm, I'm very hopeful that this is going to get us to a point where, where getting back to a sense of normalcy, which is healthy, and that's part of our, our health as a community. So I'm looking forward to further vaccination rates to get us even further back to a sense of normalcy. And lastly, lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude and, and thanks from truly the bottom of my heart to Dr. Pace for his leadership during this time of pandemic. He came into this position, and, and this was not on the radar. This was nowhere in the cards. This was not anticipated, and yet he led us through this time as a professional and as an expert, always being honest and truthful, and always with the best health of the county and all of the population in mind. So I, I truly just wanted to say thank you, because this is unprecedented, and I truly think he did an outstanding job. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and bring it to the board. Any questions for Dr. Pace, Dr. Bloom, or Sarah? Supervisor Scott.
I do have a question for Sarah. Looking at her graphs, I noticed she starts at age 18. Is there a reason why we're not going down to 16, since 16-year-olds can be vaccinated?
I thought I saw 16.
I, I think Sarah jumped off. I'm not exactly sure. I think, you know, mainly 16 and 17-year-olds can get vaccinated, but they can only get the Pfizer vaccine. And at this point, there's not very much of that in the county. So it's actually a little bit challenging for those folks to get vaccinated. So I think, I'll, we'll ask her about that so that the next time. But just to point out, I think, it looks like what's going to be happening here is the 16 and 17-year-olds can get the Pfizer vaccine, and once we start getting more shipments, that'll be easier to do. There's some discussion about trying to see if we can get some vaccine sites set up at the schools or something like that. So we're in the process of kind of starting to explore that. The, the Moderna is, is, they're trying to get emergency use authorization for the Moderna vaccine from the 12 to 17-year-olds. And the thinking is, is that that may happen in May or early June. So that age range may be able to get vaccinated this summer. Under 12 won't be until probably late fall or something like that. So that's kind of the way it's looking for the kids. But we can find out about the specific data about that going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. And I just want to thank you again for your dedication to Lake County, and it was an honor to work with you and having you serve our community. So we wish you well.
Supervisor Price, Scott.
I want to thank you too, Dr. Pace, for your compassion as a leader and always being accessible and open to anybody all across the county. You met with so many groups and the schools, and, and I, this is unprecedented, and it, and it probably is the most significant thing that any of us have been through, and obviously the most significant part of your career. So I know it wasn't difficult, it wasn't an easy year. It was difficult by any measure, but thank you for being dedicated, and thank you for believing in Lake County.
Thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I'll echo those sentiments as well. And I just want to highlight that I appreciate the meetings that we've been in, Dr. Pace, and then just your willingness to assist in any capacity, way, shape, or form, situations with people in the community, and, and just the tribal level as well, just willing to meet, willing to handle problems and solve issues. I appreciate that, and I wish you well in your, in your next endeavors.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, you know, obviously echoing across the board. So, Dr. Pace, I want to thank you, yeah, for just serving Lake County in the way that you did. You know, it was a tough time to be a leader and out in front of something, but I thought you did a great job. You know, my first stint as the chair was very interesting, so wouldn't have, you know, wanted to go through this with yourself and the rest of the Health, our department over there at Public Health. And, you know, I just want to thank you all so much. Really taking the serious attitude of our most vulnerable populations, I think is one of the most highlights, you know, throughout the last year, really attacking those, both from our, you know, our senior facilities, plus our, you know, all of the minority communities in the county. So just want to thank you very much for that. Wish you luck on your journeys forward. But also want to thank, you know, in this conversation today, the entire board and everybody who went through, through administrative staff. So, Dr. Pace, it was a pleasure. We are going to miss you, but we will keep moving on and making Lake County a better place. So thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you very much. So with all the presentations, I was looking at some numbers yesterday, ever since, I want to say approximately April. Ever since, I want to say approximately April, when we got our first case that we knew of, I've been tracking on a daily basis what's been happening with our testing, what's been happening with our deaths, what's been happening with our cases. I think we're seeing right now, and I'm crossing my fingers, that it maintains some of the lowest numbers we've seen since we really got into it. I was counting approximately five, maybe there's four more I'm not aware of, which adds up to nine for the last seven days. But all that looks good. If we maintain that, there's the possibility of going into yellow and that, just the possibility of that is exciting. And so let's hope that we can keep that trend going so that we can get there. I'm really happy that the state has kind of readjusted, especially for small counties, to be able to get into yellow. I know that I wrote a letter to the state asking for them to make those changes for everyone, not just for small counties. But I'm glad that the state was thinking along those lines already. And so let's hope we can get there. If we can get that last incremental step before June 15th of completely lifting restrictions, if we can get one more less level of restriction, it would be really helpful for all of us to, again, slowly migrate to that full, full release. I know that in my conversations with the state, the only reason that June 15th would change with the tiered system going away is if we start seeing vaccinated people getting sick. That is the only criteria that they're looking for to reassess that situation. And currently, nothing has come up for them to make that change at this moment in time. So keeping our fingers crossed that that is exactly what will happen and that June 15th is done. As of June 15th, I asked the state yesterday, does that mean if the tiered system goes away that the state of emergency is done? They are not going to end the state of emergency as of June 15th because the tiered system is gone. So hopefully that will occur at one point or another. But I know it's a conversation that I would like to have with this board at the next agenda, not today. What is our trigger for us? We, we know we're going to see this on our agenda for the next two years for refund purposes and reimbursement purposes. Right now, we still have the Pawnee Fire on our board agenda to be approved because of that. But the Pawnee Fire emergency itself is over. At what point is the trigger for us to deem that our local emergency is over and that we just keep it going for the reimbursement process? I'm not going to act like I know what that specific criteria looks like, but I think it's a conversation we should have so that we could be aware of what steps we need to take in order to get to a point where we can go ahead and go back to normalcy. Normalcy does not have a state of emergency attached to it. Normalcy is without that. And I'd like to have that conversation coming soon. I do see somebody in our audience that I want to thank. I know that we've had struggles with staffing our vaccine clinics. And I see that Pam Harpster is here with us today. I know that we got the state at one point and then they disappeared at one point. And she was right there to help us out to make sure that we had what we needed to continue. It is a little saddening that we're better prepared than the amount of people that are showing up, but it's better to be overprepared than underprepared and appreciate the, her collaboration with the county to make that happen. And of course, all the work that's happened inside the county to make that happen as well. I know that, Dr. Pace, it's been a very, very tumultuous year. We were, we were working on smoking cessation and what happened to that? And obviously that got set to the side for obvious reasons. I know that you've been, you've been in the spotlight for quite a while. And in a sense, because of the way that a public health emergency, where the public health officer is the lead in that state of emergency, you've taken the, you've taken the fire from the firing squad compared to us because we are somewhat behind you in supporting you, but not necessarily at the forefront of the decision-making, which makes people either happy or angry. There is no middle ground to make everyone happy. And I know that this has been difficult. It's put your position in a much more political position than it ever needed to be. And again, that balancing, do appreciate the fact that you were open to speak with everyone, willing to figure out ways to find avenues towards solutions with everyone. There is nothing simple about the past year that you've endured. And I will say, compared to some other counties, we're fortunate that you stayed with us to help us through this during this entire time. This has probably been the most movement in public health officers ever than any other time that I can think of, at least at this moment in time. So appreciate your endurance and appreciate your hard work to do what you believe is the correct thing to do to keep our people safe. And I know that unfortunately, while we all have opinions, as do I, not all opinions are shared in a very respectful way. And you've definitely dealt with the brunt of that. And I wish we could have done better for that. But again, appreciate your time here. Appreciate the fact that we are where we are now at 50% vaccination rate with our positivity rates dropping and the potential of going into yellow. All of that is due to your entire staff as well as your hard work. So thank you so much. And definitely a thank you to the community also because it's, it's up to them to make that decision to get vaccinated. It's up to them to make that decision to social distance, mask up and remain safe. So it's been a difficult year, but I'm really looking forward to June 15th and further movement as we start dealing with other issues because there are still many others to deal with. So let's go ahead and if there's no further comment from the board? Oh, actually, I did have one comment and I'm so sorry. There is a bit of an issue in my mind and it just, it's something I want to bring up. I know I've had a couple of business owners contact me. In the new blueprint activity and business tiers, there was an update on April 19th, 2021, that talks about, and Dr. Pace alluded to this, talks about vaccinated sections and negative test sections. It speaks mainly of venues, but it also doesn't identify or define what venues are. So that could be a theater, that could be a bar where there's music, that would be seen as a venue. And they're offering, the state is providing very vague, very blurry guidelines on basically, if you can prove that you've been vaccinated, if you can prove that you've tested negative in the past 72 hours, then you can go to a vaccinated-only section. Now, I struggle with that on a very philosophical basis. I am 100% sure the state has gone through their legal process to make sure that this is not a legal problem, but I still struggle for the fact that I'm looking at our percentages of vaccination rates and I'm looking at our percentages of population. And we're finding that people who are poor, people who are of color are not getting vaccinated at the same rate. Therefore, a vaccinated section will look a lot wider than any other section. And I'm worried about that. So if you are a business that is planning to do that, I would say, please, don't just do this on your own. Reach out to a lawyer, reach out to your industry leaders in the state, in the county, and find out what are the best practices for that. Because just jumping and trying to follow these guidelines may lead to some other unforeseen problems. And I'm just kind of worried about that whole guideline from the state. And hopefully you will take, you will follow up on that cautiously if you plan to follow up on that. And please reach out to the state or your industry leaders. Our public health is only providing the guidelines that the state has provided to us. Public health is not enforcing those guidelines or pushing for these guidelines here locally at the county. So if you call, it would just take up staff time and you wouldn't be able to get any answers to truly help you navigate through that process. So please make sure you walk that line cautiously as there has, there could be some concerns. And so that's the last thing I wanted to put there. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I see we have one hand raised and that would be our C A O.
Yes, that is me. Thank you. I just wanted to express a few more words of gratitude to Dr. Pace for his service. I worked very closely with him at many stages during the pandemic. And quite honestly, it was not only inspiring to work with him, it really was an honor. I so appreciate his calm, composed, graceful leadership during what has been one heck of a storm. So just some thanks from me too, Gary. Thank you.
Okay, and I see we have a hand raised in the Zoom room and we have Will Tuttle. Let's go ahead and unmute.
Yes, thank you. I guess I want to just start out here and a brief quote from Benjamin Rush, who was one of the signers of the Declaration of Independence, who said, unless we put medical freedom into the Constitution, the time will come when medicine will organize into an undercover dictatorship to restrict the art of healing to one class of men and deny equal privileges to others. The Constitution of the Republic should make a special privilege for medical freedoms as well as religious freedom. And to me, it's really shocking to see the way this draconian tyrannical regime has been rolling out, not only in Lake County, but you know, all over the world. And we're seeing it happening because of a failure of local governmental officials to resist. We, if you on your own, without the technocracy, coming from the health departments, coming from the CDC, coming from Big Pharma, which has basically captured governmental agencies and captured medical schools, if you on your own had told everybody in Lake County, well, we're just going to force nonessential businesses to close and you can't go to church and you have to wear a mask, everybody would have been up in arms, but, and would have resisted, of course. But when you roll it out as a technocratic fiat and say, well, the experts told us, the science is settled, the science, the scientists know best, we just do whatever they say. We abandon all responsibility for the Constitution, for our freedoms, and we just say, oh, we're terrified of this pandemic and we allow the media to be completely taken over, has been taken over. This, this whole thing has been developing over the last decades and it's now at the point where we don't have any alternative voice. I mean, I, we understand this very clearly. And so it's important to understand that doctors, medical doctors are absolutely not scientists. Doctors learn to follow protocols and they do what they're told. And this has been rolled out. And if any of these doctors, including Gary Pace or any other ones, didn't do what they were told, they would be fired. They would be, they wouldn't be here. So this whole thing is devastating. And the thing we have to understand is that there are people who are, who know a lot about this. Dr. Sukhara Bhakdi from Germany, for example, has, who's had more articles published than probably any doctor in Germany, has been saying that this is an extremely dangerous vaccine. It's not, it's not approved by the FDA or by anybody. It's only authorized for experimental use. And it's been, whenever it's been used, and this is a coronavirus vaccine, they've been trying to do this for 20 or 30 years. They, and whenever they've tried it on animals, cats or ferrets or monkeys or any animals, the animals always, it always looks great in the beginning because they, they create the antigen, but then they always die in agonizing death. And we have Michael Yedin, who's formerly with Pfizer for 20 years. He was the head scientist of Pfizer saying that this-
Mr. Tuttle, if you could please finish up your-
... people in, within two to three years, we're going to have massive deaths. So I know my three minutes, I only get three minutes. You guys can talk and talk. But we, I just want to say, the Nuremberg Trials have established the principle that if you go along, this is a massive crime against humanity and you are responsible.
Mr. Tuttle, let's, let's get to the final point, please.
We have a big responsibility for our actions here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to respond to that, medical freedom still exists. No one is forcing anyone to get the vaccine. Just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Is he, was he aware that we opened physician for public health officer as well? I mean, if he wanted to apply, he could have done so, you know?
I see other hands up. Let's go ahead. Jake, if we can unmute phone 6205.
All right, phone 6205, I've sent you an unmute request. Looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson. Wow, it's hard to follow the last speaker. I'd like to bring us to the here and now and add my gratitude for Dr. Pace and your staff for everything that you've done to support us and care about us. And it's a little nervous-making to be looking forward without a replacement yet for you. My question is about the seniors and the senior centers. How will the seniors know about when the senior centers will be available to them again? And in this transition period, will seniors know just generally what is safe and not safe? Where should they be looking for that information?
And I would suggest your best source for that information is calling up the senior centers. They are not closed. They're still doing quite a lot of work throughout this past year. They have been closed to indoor activities within the senior centers, but the services are still going strong, especially Meals on Wheels and such. So reach out to your local senior center and I'm sure you can gather that information from them. All right, let's go ahead and go to our next hand raised. For some reason, I can't, oh, there it is. If we can unmute Elaine Zacker?
Hello there, Elaine. It looks like you are unmuted, but I'm not hearing any audio from you right now. You might have a hardware mute on your side. Maybe a mute on your headphones or something like that? All right, we still can't hear you.
Okay, while we're working on that, is there any other individual in the Zoom room who wishes to make a public comment on our COVID update? Or anybody here in the chamber who wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Doesn't look like you're able to solve that problem for Elaine. If it's possible for you to type up your comment in the chat, that would be great. And just to remind people that if you do have technical difficulties, our board chamber is open, limited capacity, but our board chamber is open for the public to attend our meetings and to speak up during public comments as well. So please go ahead and text us or email us or put in the chat whatever your comment is and we'll make sure and get that. And I think at this moment in time, I'm going to move on and return back to the board if there's any further comments. No?
You know, actually, I just want to make a comment. I, Dr. Pace didn't talk about this, but I think it's very, that people need to know, even after they get vaccinated, they're not fully vaccinated. They still need to wait a couple of weeks to make sure that, you know, their bodies kick in with that. So don't think that you can get vaccinated on Monday and go about normal activities on Tuesday. So we still need to be cautious about that so we can hit that June 15th date and be able to open up without any more regulations.
And I, I think we should also recognize that this did not come from California. This came from overseas. And right now overseas, as we're all seeing, there are some very unfortunate scenes being played out, especially in India. I know Brazil was having a lot of problems before. And so while we hope that we see trends moving forward in a positive way, I still think we need to remain vigilant and watch to see what unfolds in some of those areas. Because again, with travel and everything else, things move around very quickly, as we've already seen from last year's process and how it came to New York and how it came to California. So remain vigilant. So we're going to go ahead and close this up. Dr. Pace, thank you very much. Dr. Bloom, thank you for being here with us today. And also thank you to Sarah, as always, for providing the data. And we will go ahead and shut down this item and move on. Thank you so much.